Hello, can you hear me now? Hello? Hello?
This meeting is being recorded.
This meeting is of the Finance Committee newly elected or configured. The attendees from the Finance Committee are Frank Abbott and Michelle Miller. We're meeting on Zoom and Justin May Cook and Susan Cooper of the Select Board are here early and welcome. In keeping with open meeting law, no one may speak until recognized by the Chair, please state your name. We can be a little informal, since there's only four of us at this point. As per the open meeting law, let's try to limit the discussion to agenda items. And in consideration of all participants, let's keep the remarks brief and on topic. If you're in the meeting as soon as possible. Justin?
So just a quick note, I think right now Susan and I are here as public, right? But our joint meeting doesn't begin until 4:30 if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
Okay.
So your honored guests at this point. So Frank, I'm going to propose, as Justin did last week, that I be nominated to serve as the Chair of the Finance Committee, even though it's not traditional for that Chair to not move through a cycle. I'm entertaining motions for that.
I second the motion. I'm not sure if I'm saying it right. I second the motion.
Make the motion and then I-
I make the motion for you to be Chair of the Finance Committee.
I second that. And by a vote of I, I, so two, two in favor and no opposition. All right, so now we can actually do some business. And I'm going to turn to the agenda. Frank, welcome. I've said it before and I'll say it again. I'm really looking forward to learning from you. Let me just check with you. Have you received any communications from the Town Clerk or the Town Administrator relative to your new position?
Melissa, I did get signed up for an email address, frank@montereymask.gov or dot org or whatever. And then I did, Terry, I did do the swearing in last night. And I just dropped off some of the paperwork about the, you know, reading conflict of interest and all that, signed it and dropped it off at her office when I was up there a few minutes ago.
And then also, I remember last year, there was a question about an ethics training that-
I need to go online and do the online training session.
Okay, and also the other thing that came up was the open meeting law. And they schedule trainings often on, online, and they always turn out to be very interesting information there and a chance to get questions answered. I'm hopeful we won't have any issue with that this year at all. Especially if we adopt our, the policies that I'm proposing. So that kind of covers the training. And also I have two handbooks, which you can probably download and I will send you the names of them. But they're about Finance Committee responsibilities. And of course, they're written from the point of view of suburban Boston.
Right.
Two of them are state publications and one is more focused on, from the municipal point of view, but they're both useful. So if I can either give you my copies or we can download them for you.
If you give me the link, I'll download it.
Okay, I'll make sure. I don't have it right here, but I will make sure you're bombarded with links.
That's fine with me.
So then the next order of business, which comes from a draft of a letter that I proposed last week to the Select Board, kind of outlines a lot of these issues that came up last year. And I think you all have copies of it, but shall I read it just quickly anyway? Number one was to require all members. What's that?
No, no, I have a copy going. I interrupted. I apologize.
I'm sorry. So open meeting law training, we already touched on that. I want us to agree that no single member of any board will go forth and take action or make statements as a representative of that board without a vote and/or consensus of that newly constituted board. Like if somebody decided something last year by a vote, that doesn't mean necessarily that that's still the policy. And so I just want to agree amongst ourselves that we're respectful of our other board members in taking action and positions.
The question I have is, you know, I agree with they shouldn't take actions unless the board has, you know, the Finance Committee has voted on it. I don't know about saying they can't talk. I don't know, you know.
That's not what I said. That's not what I said. What I said was, and this happened last year, that a former member, a now former member of the Finance Committee continually made representations mostly to the Select Board, but also to individuals purporting to be representing the Finance Committee. Without telling anybody on the Finance Committee, me and Katrina, that he was doing those things, which I don't even want to revisit what it was. I was just thinking, I don't want to be broadsided by saying, oh, the Finance Committee says such and such. And we go like, no, I don't think so, because that's not what, we haven't talked about it. Kind of in, you know, the same way as the underwrite. Nobody ever talked about the underwrite. Let's talk about it and agree on it. It's something that we think is representative or beneficial. So that's my only point. Yeah, freedom of speech, man. I use it all the time.
Yeah, but the question is, how do we enforce it? I mean, if you have a rogue member that-
I don't think it's a question of enforcement. I think it's like, do we agree among the three of us that this is understood? Well, then if somebody goes off and doesn't do it, well, like, you know, there's no such thing as enforcement. I think it's a gentle person's agreement on how we're going to interact with each other.
Well, I think to be an effective board, we have to act that way.
Well, exactly.
No, I mean, really, it does. I mean, we can agree to disagree.
Absolutely.
You know, that's okay. That's part of life. But I, you know, that is only my, what I raised the issue there that, you know, to be effective board, we cannot go out and misrepresent what the board or what we haven't agreed to. Someone says, you know, I agree this way. I think it should be done this way. Other people on the committee thinks it should be done that way. But I don't know, you know, that's their freedom of speech, but if they're not, it becomes a little hard to enforce.
I'm only saying that I think the people who are on whatever board can agree that we're going to have a dialogue and none of us is going to go sign letters saying so-and-so Finance Committee. When they, if they want to say so and so, great, but don't say Finance Committee.
Right, they shouldn't interject the finance. But is there something like that for the Select Board too?
Well, I don't want, whatever the Select Board does, that's up to them. I'm just introducing this as something that I hope the Finance Committee can live up to. And maybe the Select Board feels it's useful for them. That was my only intent. So-
I see Susan shaking her head.
Just so you know, I believe that is on our, do you agree, Justin? I do believe that's on our policies that we want to adopt and will take up on Wednesday? The same, the same issue. Am I correct, Justin?
Yeah, we have a code of conduct that on our newly posted agenda. So we have our own iteration of a similar document.
Look, I'm sure, but I think it'd be good if the Select Board and the Finance Board had something similar. And that's all I'm saying.
I think when, maybe we want to, after the Select Board has had some discussion, maybe we can combine our efforts. I think that'd be great.
That would be great.
Couldn't ask for anything- So we'll wait to see the results of the discussion on this topic from the Select Board. And also it'd be nice if Katrina was here for a meeting where we adopt, actually adopt the policy. So if I, if I may, I would like to move to the next paragraph that I wrote, which is that, that we agree that no member of a board file an open meeting law complaint without first addressing the issue within the board, is what I should have said. In hope of curing the violation, you know, if a person made a mistake or a person engaged in some behavior, like had a conversation with, that was a quorum and it was in the parking lot, I mean, you go like, hey, you know, that wasn't cool. That wasn't, that's not following the open meeting law. You don't have to write to the AG's office and file a form and require the person who had the oops to, you know, dig back through the minutes from last year to find out where they were and what they were doing and blah, blah, blah. So I'm trying to encourage, once again, a respectful attitude towards board members.
Common sense approach.
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, you know, I need to, I need to understand more about the OML. And I'll get that through the training.
Yeah, I think you'll get, you'll see, it'll, it'll seem much more natural once you've had the training and not so abstract. And as they, as the AG's office emphasized to me last year, the intent of the open meeting law is not punishment, it is education. It's to make government work more smoothly. And they felt that Monterey was abusing that and not with intent of education. Enough said there. Oh, number four. Oh, yes. Well, I believe it was last year, maybe the year before, that the cost of requesting documents was eliminated for people on boards. Get me, correct me if I'm wrong, because it just seemed when, that there was no limit. For example, when 300 document requests were filed at once by one person, you know, I don't have to explain why that's not an ideal situation. And a person who does that might want to pay for the extra secretarial work that's involved in responding to those things. So I encourage, and this is the Select Board's total thing to handle however you like to. But I just hope that you'll revisit the policy for document requests and how they're facilitated. Also, personally, being a computer failure, a lot, I mean, even this afternoon, I went to Zoom and it said I didn't have a meeting scheduled. You can imagine how I felt. It's like, what? People are coming to a party and it's not happening? But I found it. But you know, there is no training or consistent, like some people just go to meetings, some people use Zoom. We have what I think is not a satisfactory presentation at the Town Hall in terms of, you know, you can't see people on the screen. You can't see if they're raising their hands. You can't hear that well. So I'm hoping that we can make it a priority to improve our audio visuals and the ability of various ones of us to use them correctly. That's all I have to say on that. And the last part, oh goodness, we have plenty of time, was, oh, this is the proposed agenda. Oh, what we have to do is to do the reserve fund transfer. And that is, for the fuel account, the original appropriation was $20,000. And the amount requested today is $1,082.70 to fuel the town vehicles. And that is from Mira Beto. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this reserve fund transfer.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? I? Okay, well, that was easy part of our day. I signed my copy at the Town Hall this afternoon and Frank, Melissa can send you via email or you can stop in and sign the copy that she has there.
Okay. Yeah, she was out when I was just up there. So I'll probably stop by there in the morning.
Okay. I think, okay, on the agenda, it also says, discuss the goals for the year, including the budgeting, capital planning and adopting financial policies. I don't really know where to start with that, except with the capital plan. And I don't know, Frank, if you actually have a copy of that?
I have the copy of the agenda, the capital plan. I didn't bring it. It's in, I'm in my shop now. It's in the house. I, but um, you know, that's, you know, you and I had talked maybe a couple of weeks ago about capital planning would be on the top of the agenda.
Right, because every year during the budget time and the free cash and the reserve cash and the stabilization fund, you know, everybody starts to talk about the capital plan and it's already too late. And so one additional thought that I had was that as members of the Finance Committee and/or the Select Board, that for example, we would visit the town shed or the firehouse to actually see what it is these things are. And, you know, just talk to Jim.
Talk to Sean. I agree. We need to do it. We need to educate ourselves.
Right, and here-
Big ticket items, so we need to really understand it. I wanted to go back as we get in capital planning. There's, you know, we talked about adopting financial policies. I've been on the Massachusetts Local Services, Department of Local Services. And I think there is recommendations, suggestions about, do we have any kind of financial policies when it comes to capital?
Gee, I don't know even how to answer that question. Melissa would perhaps be the person to ask that question.
There are some places have, they have financial policies for like stabilization, how you use free cash, different-
Yeah, we do have that.
We do have that.
I believe, I could not articulate them, but maybe what would be helpful is, and I spoke to the town accountant about this town meeting, you know, just today, I got the current readout, you know, how much we've spent, how much we have left. I can't even think of what the name of that is. But-
How you're doing.
What's, yeah.
Basically.
It's somewhere on my desk, but I'm not putting my hand on it right now. But anyway, to meet with her and just have her go over things with us so that we feel familiar, so that every month when it comes into our mailbox, we can be thinking about how it might affect our attitude towards the budget next year. And of course, we've got some big ticket items coming. I mean, our, we've met our maker when it comes to the town council situation, I think. And I'm eager to hear more from the Select Board about how we're going to solve that one. Let's see.
So, yeah, when we get in with Justin and Susan, it'd be interesting to hear what they say about financial policy. You know, you know, the capital planning. I think, you know, we're at agreement that that's, we need to start looking at that now. And I'm, you know.
I really, I really like that idea. I mean, so, I wonder, I mean, one of the things that is on our agenda here is to set the next meeting date and agenda. So maybe, it's a little awkward. I think it would be good to have an in-person meeting.
I would too. Just honestly, I'm away next week. But I prefer the end, particularly when we get to talking about the numbers. But it doesn't mean I can't, you know, I'm the guy that's retired and I know that you've got a full-time job and Katrina has a full-time job. So I like structure. So I want to know what are the financial policies? So we don't go, at least I don't go down the road thinking something when a policy says, you know, you need to take a left turn, not a right turn and understanding that. Yeah, and I, I know I got a lot of homework to do to get caught up. And I'm ready to start. I didn't want to start until we had our first meeting. Because like, you know, your others, and they're fine with me, are setting the agenda. But I do think that, you know, what, what is our policy about capital? You know, because we're going to do the capital.
I think that, well, I think that number one, I'll be back on the 11th of June.
Okay.
I propose that we schedule a meeting for that week. The 11th is a Saturday, so I know the Select Board, you, do you anticipate that you're, and that doesn't mean that I can't attend any meetings on Zoom that the Select Board want to have about the council negotiations or anything like that. But I think if we're going to tackle the big issues, we should, do you have a feeling about what day of the week or time of the day you would like to do those things?
Who, me? I'm free.
The Select Board, actually.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
So our Select Board meeting hasn't begun yet, but I don't think that there's any reason we can't discuss scheduling. I'm generally, evenings are better for me. I can make interruptions in the middle of the day, but it's not preferable. We've been meeting on Wednesdays at 6:00 PM. So I would imagine probably a different night than Wednesday. And that's at least concerning me, I would think, an evening other than Wednesday. I don't know what Susan's scheduling looks like.
With the 16th? Work?
Give me a sec.
16?
Yeah.
To the best of information and belief I can make that day.
Okay, I am proposing, I move that the next Finance Committee meeting, which will be focused on the capital plan with the Select Board. So it'll be a joint meeting, take place on Thursday, the 16th. Do you mind if we do it earlier than six?
That's fine by me. It's up to Justin.
What do you say, Justin?
I can make something earlier work.
Well, how about five?
Works for me.
Yeah.
Okay, so Frank, you're on for 5 o'clock Finance and Select Joint on the 16th at 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Can I ask that if you guys, if it turns out that there are some documents pertaining to the capital plan, that you do forward those to us too, just so, because I know nothing. So anything that you find that would be helpful would be great.
Okay, I'll make sure you get anything. And Frank, I would like to suggest that we meet on the 14th as the Finance Committee, just the three of us, if there are three of us at that point, to have some preliminary discussions about the capital plan.
That will work for me. That's a good way for me.
All right, so 5 o'clock then on, on Tuesday, the 14th? Okay. You're muffled, but I just want to see-
Zoom or in person for the 14th?
What do you think? Do you want to meet in person?
I prefer to meet in person, but you know, I'm the guy with the open schedule.
Okay, well, how about, I won't have to post it until the 10th of June. So why don't we wait until then to set whether it's going to be Zoom or- Okay, so it is 4:28. I move that we adjourn this meeting and begin our joint meeting, which is on the same channel.
Michelle, I think, I think you're only posted for one meeting, so I think you probably shouldn't adjourn.
Oh.
Yeah. But we'll call our meeting, what we will call the Select Board meeting.
We'll continue and you will, and you will do your own thing.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Okay.
You just don't adjourn because you only have one meeting posted, but we will. It's 4:30 on my clock, so we will-
We sign off and sign back on, right, under yours?
No, no, we're just going to stay right on here and the Select Board meeting of May 16th is called to order, 4:30 PM, and Justin May Cook is present remotely.
Susan Cooper also present remotely.
Frank Abbott, present remotely.
And Michelle Miller, present remotely.
Mickey Jervis is on the phone.
Hi, Mickey.
Hi, I've been listening.
I know you have. I just didn't get to say hello.
I've been-
You're doing well.
So, yeah, we had a three joint, three items on the joint meeting, which the Finance Committee already delved into some of them. Susan, do you have anything in particular? I have a few points to bring up, but I'll let you go first if you have anything in particular.
Only, so I forwarded that document concerning my analysis. So I guess, as I understand the issues, they concern the, do they concern the KP bill also, or is that just the SB that's taking that up?
The items on our joint meeting are discussed goals for the year, including budgeting, capital planning and adopting financial policies. Um, the items on our joint meeting are discuss goals for the year, including budgeting, capital planning and adopting financial policies. Discuss expectations of inter-board relations between the finance committee and select board and forthcoming negotiations with council.
Okay, which one? Why don't we stay choose one at a time and you pick which one we start with?
All right, let's start just right at the beginning. Discuss goals for the year, including budgeting, capital planning and adopting financial policies. So I think for budgeting, we have a budget calendar. I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with it. It was drafted up. Not this past budget season, but the one before. And I think it's more or less what we used, Michelle, this year, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but I think it would be worth revisiting. To see if we still want to follow that budget calendar, if there's anything we want to change. Just with it with this new group of people, I thought generally it worked. Well, the one thing, a couple of things that I might. Think that we should consider changing is sometimes when we met with people in December, it seemed to be a little bit too early. Um, with their numbers, obviously, that's a pretty minor detail. But other than that. Is that is that a document everyone's familiar with, or I can send it to people if they don't have it? Okay, it was signed off on by all people who are no longer. Present. It was Don Coburn, Steve Weiss, Don Silver and Rebecca Wolan. So I just think it's worth revisiting.
This is Michelle and I just want to say that. I think it's good to have that guideline from from previous experiences, but I also think that. I want to, in a way. Start from scratch in terms of, not that we would change anything, but just that. We want to be sure we don't want to change anything, you know, and. I think the more we know about the different departments. And have a meeting with Lisa Door and see how money is being spent. And examine this idea of free cash and reserve fund transfers. All that kind of stuff is just going to be. You know, we shouldn't be making reserve fund transfers and we have been, but I think we. Partly fixed it with the budget, although at $6 a gallon, we're probably going to be another $10,000 down over that. So all those moving parts and recognizing the things that we really can't change, like the school budget. Or I I think it's just all up for grabs. The hard part is going to be, and maybe Frank is going to have. Some of the expertise we need is just how to drill down. Understand completely what it is that we're we're doing.
You know, that has been my experience is drilling down, you know, from my business, you know, for a long time. And try to develop the one-on-one department head relationships. And so I'm talking to them about data and what the data tells and try not to make a judgment in the process. You know, just trying to understand. Because we have a challenge ahead of us, you know, with the budget and capital, so. And I have the time to do it and I can show them how to do it. I'm not, we'll see where it all goes, but. You know, I think we need to really understand the details.
So I'll I'll send that out to everybody after this meeting and don't send your thoughts back to me. We'll save that for. A joint meeting or individual meetings, but I'll send that out so everyone has it. Um, and I think like Michelle said, let's just, I think we can base it off of that, but if we want to change anything, it's a new slate of people, so. Let's do what works for us. Capital planning. Um, I think, Michelle, that was a priority you set, so it sounds like our next meeting will be about the capital plan. So I don't have much to say on that, other than I think it's good that we're getting started early because we never got a chance to do that. Last year until, like you said, it was, you know, in the middle of budgeting. Um, that could be part of the budget calendar is maybe that's what November and December are for is finalizing. What off of the capital plan are we paying for this year? You know, if there's a library loan that November, December, the fall might be a good time to. That could be part of the budget calendar because I don't even think capital planning is necessarily mentioned on the budget calendar at the moment.
Couldn't agree more.
As far as financial policies go, just the last part of item number one. I think. Last year was the first time I ever went through the budgeting experience. And one thing that struck me, I thought that we could. Use improvement on kind of like the capital plan was exactly how much free cash we're using, how we're using it. How much we want to leave in free cash after annual town meeting? Um, and so if we spent the summer and fall coming up with a goal, I think what happened last year was. At a couple of different meetings, we said, oh, we want to leave $100,000 in, or we want to leave $25,000 in, and. It just might be nice to have that. Ahead of time and also so we're consistent year after year and there's some method to it all. And then the other, so if we could come up with like a free cash policy, I think that'd be great. And then the other one was stabilization. Last year, I think people had different ideas about where stabilization would be, which is probably always going to be the case. But we ended up just settling on, I think it was a half a million dollars. Um, I think we could use a policy on. At what amount are we adding and how much are we adding? And what are we using it on? Uh, because like was brought up at town meeting, if we're going to be taking out loans on a lot of items. You don't need money in stabilization if you're going to take out a loan, but maybe we should have some kind of. Agreement on what are we going to put into stabilization? What are we going to take out? And what might we use loans, take out with loans? That way, when February, March roll around. Um, we can rely on those policies that we've already come up with. So I, those are just some things that I think would be great to work on. Uh, between the finance committee and select board this year.
Yes, oh, Susan.
Justin, I just want to follow up with what Justin said. Technically, he's running this part of the meeting, but that's okay. Um, I totally agree with everything you said, Justin. The only modification I'd make, and I I don't even think it's a modification, is that. I think both of those policies, both free cash and stabilization. Should talk about the purpose of those as well as the amount because we know that the amount. Will change from year to year for everything from, you know, cost of living and whatever. But if the purpose is explicitly stated. It helps us to decide what the amount is, right? So it's a it's a minor modification, but I think both those pieces, not just the amount, but the why are important.
Really great meetings.
I I completely agree, like, just for instance, last year, the 550. That town meeting agreed to get with a loan came up and we could have, we ultimately went with a loan, but we could have paid for it with free cash if we wanted to. We could have paid for it out of stabilization and I'm not saying the loan was the right or the wrong thing to do. I just think. If we had some policies to rely on, that could, that could help us be consistent year to year and.
But the question earlier, does Melissa have copies of our policies for that?
I think to answer your question, Frank, the financial policies I'm familiar with. Uh, you know, are a lot about the accountant and how she does her job and we have some finance. Some financial policies, but I'm not aware of anything. That is a free cash policy or a stabilization fund policy. It's my understanding kind of the select board and finance committees have come up with their ideas about how to use stabilization, how to use free cash. But I just think it's that much better if we can put it down in writing ahead of time. And keep it consistent year to year and have some methodology behind it.
If I may say. That one of the things that will help us. Make those policies make sense is to look at the kinds of things that were being called on to fund. You know, like the culvert in the center of town, you know, those kinds of. Gigantic expenses. I don't know. It's just great that everything's on the table. To be discussed from and pragmatically.
That's everything I had on item one. I don't know if anyone else had. Anything to add. I I think that gives us a lot to work on this summer and fall.
As an outsider. Hi, it's Mickey. And can I just say as an outsider and not being on either one of those boards, I am happy to see that you're having, putting some thought. Ahead of the game to start your year off with as to some policies and goals. You have to remember, sometimes you have to be flexible because things change and, you know, a pandemic comes along and all of a sudden the whole world is upside down, but. As long as you have something to guide you, I think it'll work out so much better. Thank you for doing that.
Hello. Hello, who's this? Oh, hey, do can I call you back because I'm in. Okay, I'll call you back. Thank you. Bye bye. Sorry, folks.
No worries.
Oh, I just said, thank you, Mickey, for saying that.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mickey. So number two is discuss expectations of inter-board relations between the finance committee and select board, which I think. The finance committee has already laid out. Their thoughts, but we were muted, Susan. So did you have anything that you wanted to add in particular?
Dennis Lynch has joined us.
This is off the cuff, but I. I think that having the, you know, the finance committee as a sounding board for important policy is. Great, and I hope that we can cultivate a positive working relationship so that. There's back and forth interaction between both boards, the the board and the committee, if you will. Um, I I see you as a resource and. I very hopeful that we can continue to work positively together. I, you know, from my perspective. Any adversarial relationship is ridiculous and I'm very pleased to see that we're moving away from that situation. That's basically the only thing I can say.
That's the past.
And and one thing to speak to just about. Uh, what Frank and Michelle were discussing earlier with one member taking a position. Just my two cents is that if it's going to be something that's going to be deliberated at a finance committee and select board. Meeting. I I think members should share their thoughts at those meetings. Um, and hopefully, if there's something that you want to be discussed and the chairs aren't calling that meeting, you know, bring it to the chair's attention. Uh, right, Michelle, I think at least me personally, like Susan, if there's something that you want to discuss for the finance committee. Then let's let's call that meeting so that it doesn't need to spill out into into non-meetings. But at the end of the day. You know, you, no one gives up their right to act as a citizen and share their views. And so I think if you do, and it's the same within your own board as between the boards, if you do, just make clear. This is my opinion only and not that of the select board, or this is my opinion only and not that of the finance committee. And I think after we've deliberated something like, let's say we want to buy a truck. And the majority votes to fund it out of stabilization and an individual feels it would have been better spent on a free cash. You know, I think after we've had that deliberation, if you want to make that case. In the newspaper, or if you want to make that case at town meeting, of course, you're more than welcome to, but. Uh, bring it to the boards, you know, I think if you can bring it to the boards first is is the right way to do it. That's just my two cents on. On that, and you never give up your right. One thing that I do. When I'm acting not on behalf of the board. Um, which I can, you know, we can never take a official action. You know, on our own, but we can do things like get information and. Share our opinion or something like that. We just can't take official action. One thing I do, and I don't know if it would work for other people, but I put select board. Comma, member or something like that, just to be clear and just don't make any statements like. The select board wants this or the select board requests this, just, you know, I'm requesting this. This is my opinion only. And select board comma member. I think that for me has mostly kept me in the clear. On that.
Well, I just, I I. I feel personally that if I'm making a statement that reflects only my personal opinion. I don't want it to reflect on the finance committee at all. I don't want anyone to think that I'm in any way. Participating in the discussion as a finance committee member, but only as a private citizen. So I think that that's one of the things, you know, it's like there's no enforcement. It's. It's really up to boards to decide for themselves, but I'm just saying for me personally, that's my. Higher goal is for us just to all operate from a place of consensus and when we can't, then we can speak as individuals. And and voters and citizens. So. Yeah, and. It looks like we're off to a good start with joint meetings. Maybe we should think about having them once a month. Thursday, just the way we set the one for June 16th.
Yeah, and I think. I think especially if we want to get into. Uh, agreeing on a free cash policy, a stabilization policy, or like the capital plan. Or the budget calendar. Uh, maybe it will require more, but if we need at least one, once a month to start off. That should keep everyone in the loop and on the same page.
Oh, well, I think we we have a good, a well, a wealth of goodwill to go into that. Whole discussion, so. Are we ready to move to number three? Because I can't wait. Oh, someone's speaking?
Frank, can you, I don't, can you hear me? Do you want me to research? What what the Department of Local Services says and what other jurisdictions are doing on these policies?
Oh, you mean the financial policies?
Yeah, like free cash. I was, I'll ask Melissa. She has.
Whatever information is. Me too. You do, yeah, I would encourage you to come back to our next meeting with as much information as you can find.
Okay, I'll do that.
For free, you're gonna do that.
Yeah, free, I got, I'll do something with my time.
So just not to, I not to digress, but what about number three, the forthcoming negotiations with council?
So I think, and I think Susan added this, I think. And it came up at town meeting, right? And some terminology has been potentially misused. I don't, I still don't. But essentially, you can either have a fixed fee agreement, which is always what was had with. Jeremiah Pollard when he was town council and what we had with K. P. Law. And what we still have with K. P. Law and then services outside of that, like litigation. For instance, are going to be at an hourly rate in almost every case. One thing that's come up is have we, as we've had proposals this round, we have not had any. Retainer proposals. We've had hourly rate proposals. And one thing that I will note is KP Law didn't initially offer a retainer proposal. Last year, but we asked them for a retainer and they actually offered the same retainer that. Uh, Jeremiah Pollard was working on and then they upped it by $2,000. uh, Jeremiah Pollard was working on. And then they upped it by $2,000 for this year. Um, but I guess a question would be if we can't solicit a fixed fee agreement of, I just realized I messed up the two terms again. But if we can't solicit a fixed fee agreement and we have to go with an hourly proposal, I would like to think that we could be judicious. I can think about 50% or more of the town council um, contacts last year were probably not necessary. Um, and I would like to think that we could be judicious and come in under budget. But uh, just throwing it out there uh, as to, I mean, I guess Susan, Susan, do you want to add anything?
Uh, I, I love what you said. I would love to see us be judicious. I'm, I'm concerned about, um, so at 225 for the Myers and Harrington amount, it would amount to seven hours a month. I just did a quick recalculation for the, for Costa's firm, the one we just got. And their, their fee is at 180 an hour. So our 19K would amount to 8.8 hours a month. Um, of the four months that Melissa got me from last year, the lowest month we had was 10 hours.
In December.
Yeah. Um, so I, I'm all for what you're saying, and I totally agree that we would have to be judicious. Um, I will also note that uh, we did reach out to Stockbridge. They do have a retainer with Myers and Harrington for the amount of 42K.
Yeah, and so that's high. And so if we just thinking out loud, if we do get a, a fixed fee retainer agreement that's above our budgeted 19,000, really the only right thing to do in my mind would be to call a special town meeting. Because I just think we'd have the time to do that, we wouldn't have to, I, I, I think it'd be better than making a reserve fund request. Um, it seems to me a reserve fund transfer request is really for unexpected things in lieu of calling a special town meeting for $2,000 over in the fuel account. Whereas if we knew well on advance, our retainer was going to be above the budgeted amount, we would have plenty of time to call a special town meeting and let the voters decide at town meeting whether or not they're agreeable to that. I think also, and my sense from what our negotiations with KP last year was that these firms that do municipal law are aware of how these fixed fee agreements work. And they might be willing to meet uh, that 19,000. I don't think it was a coincidence that last year KP came in at the exact amount that we had budgeted for the fix for, you know what I mean? Um, but who's to say if they really are 42 grand in West Stockbridge, which isn't much larger than Monterey, they're probably not going to meet 19,000 for retainer. So these things will all. Yeah.
I think that actually, I mean, Stockbridge is a much more complicated municipality. Oh, West Stockbridge?
Yeah.
Well, that's also not Monterey, but um.
Um, no, it is Stockbridge, not West Stockbridge. Stockbridge, yes.
Oh, God, sorry, my bad.
You're bad. Um, number one, okay. If we looked at how we spent our legal dollars excess, um, I mean, we know, I, Justin said it well, you know, 50% of the calls were, I mean, there was a policy and nobody followed it. And people were like Red Rover, they would just go over and call the town council and town council didn't tell them, no, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you. But if we looked at the different, you know, how much, uh, I had to speak to town council one day because of, uh, oops, sorry, are you there? Oops.
I'm here. Yeah, we can, we can hear you and see you.
Oh, you can see me? I can't see you. There it is.
Definitely see you.
You know, I'm swiping. Um, uh, you know, could we say, all right, $19,000 by the hour? This is your budget. This is what you get to spend. We only can afford seven hours this month. Don't waste it.
Um, what like, um, hmm, I don't know if it's come up in the past, but the retainer agreements or the fixed cost agreements, whatever we want to call them, never cover litigation.
No.
What has happened? My question is, what has happened in the past with litigation issues? How, where have they been paid from? Have they involved a special meeting? Have they involved some kind of transfer?
We had a special, or there was a line item for litigation.
And so Susan, ask Melissa about this, but I remember last year around this time, well, a little bit after this time, we made at least one, I think it was multiple transfers to the litigation fees and expenses account. I think it was from select board. There's that one account called like select board expenses. And we definitely had litigation go over last year. We definitely had litigation go over last year. I don't remember by how much, but Melissa should have those numbers. So that's something that happens. But it's kind of two separate issues. And if we move away from a fixed fee retainer agreement, it doesn't appear as much as two separate issues, but the, the everyday council advice versus the, someone's taking us to court. Or we're taking somebody to court fees. It is kind of two separate things.
I, I totally see that. I just, it was just helpful to see the whole picture.
Yeah, because we, like, you did this little analysis here. God bless you, um, for the different, the amounts of time, you know, and how, how do you judge that?
So one, one question I have as well is KP Law did resign uh, uh, about a month, a little over a month ago, maybe April, a, a little over a month ago. And they resigned effective after the town meeting. And we were able to convince them to stay on through May because we were going to look for new town council. And since then, the select board has two thirds of the select board is no longer on the select board. And I'd be curious, or I, you know, just throw it out there. Would it make sense for me to reach out to KP and see if they would even willing to stay, be willing to stay on for the $19,000 fixed fee agreement that we had set with them before they resigned, given that there's a new board?
Given that there's a new characters, they might go for it.
I, I have, I have a little bit of a reservation about that. On the one hand, I don't see any harm in asking. Um, as long as we don't have to commit, my hesitation are twofold. Um, one is, I, and you know, how we approached them this year in terms of making sure there's a clear line of communication and it's a single place and we're not all contacting them, which clearly needs to happen. Um, I, I feel like we got differing answers multiple times from the different people and that's not helpful. And the second thing is I do have a big issue in how they handled the investigative report. Um, I think to title it no investigation was a major error, not a minor one.
What did I miss? What are you talking about? No investigation.
Do you want to explain or do you want me to, Justin?
Um, you can explain.
Sure.
I'm not really familiar with.
So the report, the investigative report was forwarded to council, asking them to redact it so that it, the redacted versions could be sent to all of the parties who had filed complaints.
Mm hmm.
Um, council did it, but when they sent it out, they titled the report, which involved 18 complaints from a number of people, as you know, NOE investigation.
Ooh, ouch.
When Steve told me that he can, he spoke with them about that and they said, oh, you know, it's really not a problem. That, that's a problem.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, so I, I have reservations about using them. Um, but I, you know, those are, those are my reservations and your experience with them may may speak to them still being a viable candidate.
Yeah, I was generally very pleased. I wasn't usually the first line of contact with them, but I read things that they wrote to Steve and Melissa. Um, and occasionally Steve would refuse to ask them a question. So he'd have me ask them the question. Um, so I did have some firsthand experience with them and I generally found them to be uh, good, do good services for the town and they were straightforward and answered legal questions citing law and some, and case law. Um, certainly, you know, I think last year everyone did things, maybe not every, I don't want to say everyone did things, but it can be easy to. There was a lot of things that people were put under a microscope for last year. And so while you, you know, you, you can think, you can have a concern and I'm not saying your concern's not valid. Uh, I just think if you know, they could generally provide good services and they're willing to do it for the agreed upon fixed fee. Um, let's consider that against other candidates because we'll be interviewing, it sounds like three other uh, candidates, but that's really a policy decision for the select board to make, so.
No, but I, I totally support asking them if they would be willing to continue for the fixed fee as long as we don't have to commit to it because four candidates is better than three candidates.
So would you, I would motion, since this is a select board meeting, I would motion that I will reach out to KP and ask since there is a fresh board, if they would be willing to consider work for the new board at the agreed upon fixed fee because it's a new board.
I second.
Or say you can do it. No, I think that's great.
All right, I'll vote yes.
Yes.
And Susan Cooper votes yes. Okay, I will, I will reach out to them.
Um, since this is an SB meeting, should, um, you, uh, I believe that you were now sent also, um, or should be by tomorrow morning, or I can forward it if you want. Um, Adam Costa's proposal, do we want to go ahead and ask Melissa to schedule an interview with them?
Yeah, I mean, scheduling is, is certainly something that can be, um, I mean, if someone submitted a proposal for town council, they should, we should interview them, I think.
I think so too.
Whether or not the scheduling works for this week um, is something that, why don't you just flush that out with Melissa? We don't, we don't need to do that in the.
Okay.
But I, I'm fine with that.
I just wanted to make sure you were okay with interviewing. That's all.
Absolutely. More interviews, the better, I think.
Do you have, do you have, um, for example, uh, num, a, a list of questions? How would you approach that interview? I mean, I wouldn't have a clue as to, you know, oh, you're a nice guy, you're wearing a tie. Okay, you're hired.
So.
Um, so.
Yeah, I mean, I had a, I came up with a list of questions for the last time that we did this in August, maybe July, August, September. So I'll probably revisit those questions and also just come up with questions from what I've experienced in the past year of what makes for a good town council. Um, if that, that's how I'll proceed and prepare that for Wednesday because we're doing town council interviews on Wednesday, by the way, for those of you who don't know.
Are those happening during the select board meeting?
Yes.
Or are they?
Um, and I, I have a list of questions as well. My guess is we'll probably have some similar questions, but that's okay. As long as the question gets asked, I don't really care who asks it. Um, and you know, I think it's important to address questions like, um, how do we make sure that there's a consistent line of communication? So that we don't get differing opinions from different councils. One thing that I'm interested in is where they fall on the spectrum from, um, here are five options. But no commentary on the likely outcomes or preferred outcomes or any of the weight of their experience versus do this. Right? That's the spectrum. And I, I think it's important to know how the firm approaches that spectrum and where they fall in terms of when they're offering you an opinion. Um, how are they presenting it? Um, and how do they view themselves as, um, are they, you know, advisory, but in the background or are, are they like telling you what to do or somewhere in the middle? Which I presume they're somewhere in the middle, but I'd like to hear how they phrase their approach to that.
And one, and one thing I think it, that's a, that's correct. Thing that you identified, I think another thing that comes into play is how the board and others who utilize town council actually use town council because how you ask a question and how you receive an answer and ask follow-up questions can also um, affect how, how useful it is.
When the clock is ticking, spare with your words, right?
Yeah, well, that's one reason to have a fixed fee agreement. Um, but you know, there was, I think there was one month where we went under the fixed fee agreement and that's why some councils, I could be wrong, don't quote me on that. Um, but hopefully this year, whether we get an hourly rate or a fixed fee agreement, we will use counsel judiciously, so.
All those in favor? Aye. That's not, that's not an official vote, but I just wanted to get it on the record.
Um, I guess that's kind of sums it up for me. I don't know if any, if Mickey or Dennis had anything, any particular questions.
Uh, I apologize for coming in late and I didn't want to interrupt the conversational flow here on that very important topic, but um, I missed the first uh, item of discussion and I was interested in uh, some basic information about a, a capital plan. For example, do we have one? And specifically, what are the intervals involved, involved? Are they five-year, 10-year? Uh, and what specific projects are in the capital plan as it relates to infrastructure?
So Dennis, I don't know if you're on the phone or on the laptop, but Michelle is actually holding it up to the.
Oh, good.
Screen.
Um, you should be able to acquire this for your own perusal by going to the town hall and asking for it. Or if you can't, then um, please get in touch with me. I'd be happy to have your eyes on it. You know, it's, it's, it's got uh, fiscal year estimates out to fiscal, fiscal year 40, which what that's worth, I don't know.
I know.
But you know, I think it's, um, it's pretty loosey goosey and that's why we're going to focus on it uh, intensely this year.
Sure.
I think we all feel like we need to do more homework before we can say anymore about it, in my opinion.
Sure. Well, thank you for mentioning that, Michelle. And uh, uh, I think that was pretty much, uh, you know, my question at this point.
And to, just to follow up Dennis, to discuss all, or to summarize as I saw. And to, just to follow up Dennis, to discuss all or to summarize, as I saw all of agenda item number one. The finance committee and select board were agreeable to looking at the budget calendar. And seeing if we want to make any revisions to that, the one that was agreed upon two years ago. Um, looking at the capital plan and considering adopting policies for stabilization and free cash. Um, and Frank was actually going to look into more general financial policies, but. Um, I think the general idea was we're hoping to do that this summer and fall. Uh, and so that way when budgeting comes around, we we have some guidelines to go off of.
Sure. Um, just very quickly, the impetus for my question about the capital plan. Uh, was simply the fact that under the MVP grants, they ask for annual updates. As part of an application for funding. And and it's just good to know what specific. Especially infrastructure related projects might be considered that would fall under that general category going forward. Uh, so that, uh, you know, that can be planned for. So that's my thought.
All right.
Again, for the update.
Did we hang?
What's that?
Oh, no, you're still there. There was just such. Sure if everybody was frozen. That is that, that's the end of the agenda, is it not?
I think so. Uh, Mickey, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, bye.
Nice meeting.
Thank you.
Hi and goodbye.
Thank you.
And not only that, but I think I have to make a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting.
You have a second.
And all those in favor?
I.
I, the meeting is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn select board meeting.
Second.
Justin, yes.
Susan, yes.
Adjourned.
Good night.